So I want to call this meeting in order of the Montclair City Council along with the other agencies. Kind of nice to use that gavel finally again, but we're going to begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance, and then I'll ask the city clerk to introduce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Donald Rucker of the Christian Development Center, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Johnson.
Please stand.
Good evening, everyone. Well, fathers, we have great pleasure that we stand here in this place, and we call upon your name once again, Lord God, for your leadership, your direction, your wisdom. We need help. Our land is suffering. Our people are hurting. And you have promised, Lord God, that when we call upon you, you would answer us. And you also said you would give us wisdom. So I pray for this body of leadership tonight, God. And I ask that, Father, that you would give them the boldness and the insight and the wisdom that they need to govern this great city and its citizenship, that they will lead with righteousness, that, God, that they would not be backed down, God, for making a stand against lies, that are corroding, Lord God, the truth of this nation. We pray for them tonight. We lift them up to you tonight because you work through leadership. It is your order. And so we ask you tonight, in Jesus' name, please direct these men and women of God. Direct them, Lord God, in their leadership and in their decision-making for this city and the surrounding city and, of course, this county. And, Father, we commit them into your hands, in Jesus' name. And we pray, Father, that you will continue to uphold them. You will continue to guide them. As you have promised in your word, you said if we acknowledged you, you would direct our path. Well, that's what we're doing tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Can the city clerk please take roll call?
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temru?
Present.
Mayor Dutre?
I'm present.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is presentation of the COVID-19 Community Recognition Award. And this evening, we're going to recognize Pastor Don and Ethel Rutgers. Obviously, Pastor Don just did the invocation. If you don't know, both pastors, the Rutgers, excuse me, were actually former residents here in Montclair at one point, and then they moved on to another community. But Pastor, both Pastor Don and Pastor Ethel took an interest in ministry, and not just ministry of spreading the word of the Lord, but the ministry also to go out and take care of the needy. And they opened a church here in Montclair about three or four years ago, and the name of the church is the Christian Development Center. It's there around the corner of Fremont and Kingsley. And I think all of, on the entire city council have worked with both Pastor Don and Ethel here in Montclair. And one of the things that they have been doing, they've been running a food bank for three, four years now, but nevertheless, they became more interested in doing counseling, especially counseling for families either who are about to go homeless or who are homeless, and then helping them to not just, you know, find a place to live, find them some income, but also kind of rebuild their life, get them back on their feet, find jobs, you know, help them try to resolve some issues in their personal life. And so as a result, they become better human beings. And the reason why they're here this evening is twofold. You know, one reason why I'm here this evening because I know that supervisor, he actually is a supervisor, Gabe Fondero, Gabe's here someplace. And as you know, Gabe is, he's in charge of code enforcement, and there's Mary, his supervisor. And Code Enforcement Division has taken a strong lead in dealing with the homeless population in the city of Montclair. And Gabe's always looking for resources. I know he's looking for people, money, of course, and also homeless shelters for assistance. And I think, I'm not sure it was before the pandemic, probably it was before the pandemic, but I believe that bond got closer during the pandemic because not only that we were seeing more homeless in our streets or potential homeless, but we also have, we have a health issue where we have to assist people and to ensure that they don't get the virus. So both Pastor Don and Ethel wanted to work closely with Gabe in code enforcement and provide their services. So they worked, I believe, in conjunction with the county San Bernardino. At one point, the city of Montclair, the city staff agreed to work with the county of San Bernardino, and one of the motels in Montclair did house homeless individuals during the epidemic. And I know that both Pastor Don and Ethel went out and helped counsel as many people they can. And then recently, about two weeks ago, there was a mother and a daughter, I believe they attended your church, but they were going through some difficulties as well. And, you know, they were also dealing with the threat of being homeless. And through a partnership with Metro Honda, they were able to get a used trailer purchased, and then were able to place it at the, one of the mobile home trailer parks here in Montclair. And this mother and daughter now have a place to live, and I want to recognize Pastor Don and Ethel for making that happen as well. So they've done quite a few things in our community, the city of Montclair community, to feed the people, to counsel the people, and then get the resources to the people that need it, especially, again, these last 14 months. So I want to come on down there. I'll put my mask on.
Come on over here. You know, screen here, see him off there.
You're right.
But I really do appreciate what you both do. You know, I like to say that you both provide a heart. I choose learning, but a heart. I find it's a lot of learning within the heart part. And so that's very important. And I see the love that you provide, and especially with me. And so with this, I'm going to give you the recognition of myself and the entire Montclair City Council, that you can do that. See, now you have your, actually, it's going to be bad, isn't it? I wish to be a official of the city of Montclair, but I'm going to do it with my hands. So I can say that we're part of the, not just the Montclair City, but the city of Montclair.
Thank you very much.
Let's go over here. We'll take some pictures.
Thank you.
Come on over here. See if you can show it off.
I think you've got, I think you've been hard, right? Or is something wrong? I don't know.
Smile, please. Smile. You're in the background.
Oh.
Photobone. Got me. All right, where are we guys? Do you want to have a look? Sorry? Do you want to say something real fast?
I know, I know. I'm not shy. All right. We just want to say thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege to serve our community. And as John, I've known everybody, I was telling everybody before, our son, years ago, when, who was it, Mayor Paul Eaton was here, and Carolyn Raft, he was chosen as an advisor to go to San Bernardino County and represent as an ambassador. And the city came alongside of us then, and we partnered together to help get him there. And so I'm grateful. That's him right back there. And he served a lot of tasks. So we're just grateful to be a part of the community, and we thank God for all that we can do as we partner together to lift people. We believe in lifting people, giving them a hand up, not a handout. So that's what we do.
And I just want to give kudos to Gabe. I don't, I tell you, this guy has a big heart for people. And this wouldn't be possible if Gabe didn't have the vision, you know, and dragging us along, making us work. Gabe deserves so much credit. Him and Rob and the Code Enforcement Department, they really do, you guys. You just don't know the work that they do in the, you know, every day. And it's just awesome to see someone like him that cares. So, thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Gabe.
Mary, thank you too, Mary. Thanks so much.
Go ahead, Gabe.
I just want to say that Pastor Don is giving way too much credit. They definitely deserve all the credit. As you know, sometimes dealing with homeless can be a cumbersome job, let alone trying to get them to commit to going to an affiliate facility or a drug program or something like that. But I got to tell you, the real work starts is when they make that commitment to go. That's when Pastor Don and Ethel there pick up the pieces and sometimes deal with layers upon layers of mental and emotional and sometimes physical problems that prohibit these people and our homeless from getting housed and functioning back into society. So I can't say enough good things about them. We are very, very fortunate to have them on our team. So thank you very much, you guys.
If I may?
Yeah, I think some of the councilors want to make some comments. They can hold on for a second. So go ahead, Councilman Lopez.
Ethel, Ethel left the room. Yes, you did. Ethel, I recall us going back to 1995. That's when I met you. I was 18 years old, just out of high school, and you and I served on the Youth Accountability Board. And at that time, it was a joint venture with the San Bernardino County Probation Department. And we were the biggest accountability board group in the whole county at the time. We had four or five panels. We met in this, in these chambers. We interviewed first-time nonviolent youth offenders at the time, gave them a chance at restitution and a chance to erase that offense. I remember you back then. I appreciate all the energy you had back then, to see you still active in town, even though you moved out. No, I ain't mad at you. I get it. I get it. I appreciate you continuing what you did back then and it's still going forward. And Pastor, I haven't had the pleasure of working with you yet. I did work with your wife. I appreciate everything you guys have invested in the city. So thank you, and Gabe as well, for all his efforts in code enforcement. Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Temru, one more, one more speaker. There might be a couple more speakers after this. We'll make it short, please, everybody.
Pastor Rutgers, I appreciate so much what you do in this community. When I think of your service, I think of the words of Saint Matthew in chapter 25, when he said, "And I looked at the stranger, and I was a stranger, and you took me in. I was naked, and you clothed me. I was given to thirst, and you gave me to drink. I needed food, and you fed me." I'm paraphrasing his great words, but that's what you do in this community. And whenever I see you, I think of the words of Saint Matthew, and he's very special to me, and I know he is to you. May you continue to do your good work, and may both of you and your families be blessed. Namaste.
Thank you. Okay. We will continue on with the agenda. At this time, we're under public comment. This is where the members of the audience can speak on any item that's not on the public comment. They'll have five minutes. Traditionally, if you wish to speak, if you're on Zoom, or if you're on the phone on Zoom, you just raise your hand to speak. If you're on the phone, you'll hit star six if you wish, star nine to raise your hand on the phone. You can have star nine if you wish to speak on the phone. And then if there's a consent calendar item you wish to remove or discuss, I would ask at this time, you do the same thing. If you want to speak on a consent calendar item, if you want to identify what that is, please raise your hand as well for consent calendar items, or hit star six if you're on the phone. So first of all, I don't see anybody in the audience that wants to speak, looks like it. I don't see no cards. So now we will go to our Zoom and phone folks. And do we have any speakers?
Yes.
I see one hand up.
Tuan is raising his hand, so you want me to go ahead and?
Yeah.
Start with him?
So we have one speaker. And then other than that, I don't see any other speakers other than Tuan. So, okay. You have, Tuan, you there?
Yes.
Okay, Tuan, you have five minutes. Yes. You there?
Yeah. So, "Faggot." That was what I heard in a faint whisper as I was leaving high school and heading home during my sophomore year in high school. The word whisked into my ears like a dozen sharp pins penetrating my eardrums. And I remember my fish clenching, my chest sinking, and my stomach turning. And not knowing what to do and feeling very defeated, I just kept walking until I crossed the street and left Montclair High School campus. And that occurred in the spring of 2004. Encountering that word was not the first occurrence, nor was it the last time I would ever hear it again since high school. Good evening, city council members, staff, and fellow residents. If my story, my little tiny short story demonstrates anything, is that part of Montclair's values and mission must continue to include intentional, active, and practical approaches in creating a safe and welcoming environment for LGBTQ folks, especially when considering, as I have once told you last year in October, how studies show that LGBTQ youth feel unsafe at school due to their sexual orientation and gender expression, and are at higher risk for encountering interpersonal violence, suicidal tendencies, and homelessness than their heterosexual peers. Or how studies continue to show that LGBTQ people express fear of bodily and property violence, fear of losing family and community ties and support, and fear of family disapproval as reasons for not to live openly as LGBTQ people. Or how reports also show an increase in hate crimes in the U.S. against LGBTQ people, particularly gay men and transgender people. These types of violence not only occur between individuals, but also enacted through state policy. I mean, just this month alone, for example, Tennessee Governor Bill Lee signed into law an anti-LGBTQ education bill that made it more difficult for students to learn about sexual orientation, gender identity, and other related sexual health content. Such type of anti-LGBTQ state policy mirrors the same anti-LGBTQ policies that Councilmember Ben Lopez had supported for over a decade in California and still have yet to apologize for, whom Bill Rue and also you, Mr. Mayor Dutre, had supported during this last election year. This is why I am speaking to you once again tonight, to ask that our city publicly recognize and celebrate LGBTQ Pride Month this upcoming June. As described and written on youth.gov, LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated annually in June to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots and works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for LGBTQ Americans. In June of 1969, patrons and supporters of the Stonewall Inn in New York City staged an uprising to resist the police harassment and persecution to which LGBTQ Americans were commonly subjected to. And this uprising marks the beginning of a movement to outlaw discriminatory laws and practices, and practices against LGBTQ Americans. Now, while I am still learning about the workings of our local city government in Montclair, I would be more than happy to work with you in crafting a resolution and proclamation that we can pass to formally and publicly recognize June as LGBTQ Pride Month in our city. I also ask that our city light up the exterior, our beautiful exterior of our city council chamber in rainbow-colored lights throughout the month of June to symbolize the visibility of Montclair LGBTQ residents such as myself, and that we, Montclair leaders and residents alike, welcome and recognize LGBTQ Montclair residents' presence and existence, acknowledge their struggles, and commit to supporting and protecting them, along with any Montclair resident. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I don't see any other speakers in the public comment. So with that, we will now go on to consent calendar. We have no public hearing this afternoon, so we'll go to consent calendar. I'm going to take this off. Consent calendar. And then I'm going to look to my left and see anybody on my left. Want to remove any consent calendar items? No? Nobody? How about my right? Anybody on my right? Want to move a consent calendar item?
I do, Mr. Chairman, for comment. Item C2.
Okay. Anybody else? Nobody else? Okay. So is there a motion for the consent calendar reception of item C2?
Oh, moved.
I will second that.
So moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Rue, and we will now take electronic vote.
One moment, sorry.
Okay, that's passed unanimously. Now we'll go to item C2 that was pulled.
Mr. Chairman and colleagues in the committee on the council, I just wanted to state, and it's mentioned in the report, the reason why we're having to make a $6,000-plus expenditure is because yet again, we have a state mandate from Sacramento forcing us to report certain stops and a certain degree of crime, even though they're lower-level crimes, and report those findings to the Department of Justice. And it is then the responsibility of the State Department of Justice to determine if agencies are racially profiling individuals. I will say, just based being on the other side of this dais on the council as a resident, I have never once heard of our police department and its officers engaging in such activity. I don't think we are of that nature. Our caliber of cops and our, the ethical behavior of our officers is top-notch. I don't think that would be a problem. And I have always stood against any mandates from the state that they themselves don't reimburse the cities for. But here we go. We have an example of that, where we have the state micromanaging localities. I'm against the theory of that practice, but nonetheless, I just wanted to make that comment. But I will move the item for approval, that we approve item C2.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Lopez, seconded by Mr. Rue, and we'll do our electronic vote. Almost there. Okay. That's also adopted by a vote of 5-0. Okay, we are now down to communication. So I think I'll start with our acting city manager, Marshall Richter. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention, I know there was some information out regarding masks from the CDC, and I just wanted to mention that we will be continuing our usual wearing of masks until later in the month when we get some more direction from our state guidelines and OSHA. So we'll keep everyone updated on that. But just wanted to let everyone know that we'll be following the regular mask guidelines.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Mayor Dutre would like to add to that comment.
Oh, go ahead.
So the CDC, as we know, back in April 27 of this year, they updated their guidance to ease the outdoor mask requirements. And as a result, the California Department of Public Health on May 3 also did similar. And as acting city manager Richter did comment, we will continue maintaining our current mask mandate. While the CDC did further relax their guidance earlier this month pertaining to the use of indoor masks for indoors for fully vaccinated individuals, we still have to comply with our state mandates about that. The state did issue guidance today that on June 5, as part of the reopening and further lifting of restrictions of the economy, that they would provide further guidance on the use of masks for indoors. So right now, the state is still maintaining the current mask guidance, which requires that individuals do wear masks when they're indoors. They don't have to wear them outdoors. And we have provided that update to the residents of the city. We also have that on the pylon sign at CIM that reminds individuals that indoors you still have to wear a mask, but outdoors you do not have to. So the state is still waiting to see what guidance they're going to change. So there is about a four-week period that we're going to wait to find out. So they should be providing further information as to the indoor restrictions they will have. But I also just wanted to remind the council that Cal OSHA did adopt emergency temporary standards pertaining to the use of face masks. Those temporary standards are supposed to sunset October 2 of this year, and they actually have a board meeting this Thursday where they were going to look at the existing standards and most likely renew them. They have made a comment that they will not make any permanent changes to the mask requirement without first consulting the state and seeing what the guidance will be from the state. So since the state hasn't provided that, Cal OSHA will most likely continue the temporary standard and re-adopt that going forward. And in addition, there is state law SB 1159-Hill, which was passed during the last legislative session that makes a presumption that any individual who is working outside of their home contracted COVID-19 while at the workplace. So employers still have to maintain the Cal OSHA mandate as well as be liable for workers' compensation to any employee that gets sick as a result of COVID. There are some allowances that allow for businesses to try to say that the employee didn't contract COVID while on the job, but the presumption is that they did. So the employer has to kind of go through an investigation to provide that information. And that law doesn't sunset until January 1 of 2023. So we have the Cal OSHA mandate as well as SB 1159 that are still active on the books. So that will have to be worked out going forward, whatever the state does decide. And that's just a kind of update. So we'll be maintaining our current standard.
Yeah, I think you're, it's obvious. The state of California mandates the masks here in California. We'll follow that until, at that time. I know the CDC ruling causes some confusion, but we have to follow state law still.
And we'll be promoting that on our social media as well, that face masks are still required indoors until further guidance is provided by the state.
Okay. Thank you.
One more item, Mr. Mayor, too, is that I just wanted to mention that the skate park was reopened to the Kennedy on Thursday, May 6.
Right.
And last Thursday, on May 13, we reinstalled the hoops for the basketball.
They're slowly opening up. Very good. Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Real quickly, Mr. Fuentez, what was the, when does the OSHA's mask mandate sunset? You said October 21?
October 2.
2. Thank you, sir.
And Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, I'm just, thank you for that information. That's, there have been lots of questions from businesses wanting to have this information. So that's very good. Thank you. The only thing I would ask, that since the state is still going to stay with masks until June 15, I wonder if our next meeting after June 15, we can have this on the agenda, just so that we can share with our community.
Okay. I believe that's all we have. Okay, moving right along under Mayor's comments, I'll start with the previous speaker, public speaker. I believe our past practice has been if an organization contacts us and requests a proclamation to declare a certain month for a particular event, if we do get something from the LGBTQT community and organization requesting a proclamation, I think we should go and issue one for the month of June. And then we will, if they wish to be here for that, or we can, we can submit that to them, put on the agenda, submit it to them, however is appropriate. I'm okay. And then if, I know in the past practice, we did, I believe back in October, we also did a proclamation last October for another event in regard to the LGBTQT community. And we did something here in the council chambers as far as lighting. I think that's appropriate as well. I think it's important that we recognize all of our members of this community. I think it's important that we recognize all of our members of this community. We are a very, very diverse city, and I think with the times today, it's important that not only that we respect each other's, but we also respect each other's ideology, culture, and et cetera. The, yes?
I'm sorry, before you move on to the next item, didn't, last year, didn't we have a banner hanging outside of council chambers for LGBTQ?
I don't think we had a banner, but I know we did a proclamation, and we didn't have a council meeting for the proclamation, I think it was, I signed it and it got issued by staff, and then they did something here in the council chambers as far as lighting.
It was for a Montclair High School student.
That's what it was, a Montclair High School student. The Montclair High School student organization, one of the clubs, so if that club wants to submit us a letter and request that, we can do it to the, and present the proclamation to that club, that's a request. I know that the Planning Commission and the Community Activities Commission are holding interviews. I understand the Community Activities Commission will meet on May the 24 to interview applicants. And then the Planning Commission, I want to interview the Community Activities Commission interview panel, which is two members of the city council, and then there's also interviews for Planning Commission applicants to be done by a separate interview panel of two city council members, and they're still working on a date. I don't think we resolved the date yet, so I just wanted to announce that. I do want to say that, you know, here in Montclair, over 50% of the Montclair adults have at least one vaccine. I think we're, at least 35% have two vaccines, and that's really good, and we're above the county average, which is great. Fortunately, what's happening, not just, I think in Montclair, but as a county and throughout the nation, is number of residents getting vaccinated, that number has dropped, the percentages have dropped. And I, we all understand the importance of vaccines, I'm not going to repeat what I said a lot two weeks ago, but I think that's good information that if, we know people won't get vaccinated, obviously the Montclair Place has it, doesn't require an appointment, and, and let's proceed with that. Earlier today, I was in Glendora, the Gold Line Construction Authority had a, an event to visit their Glendora facility. So I, as an alternative board member representing SBCTA, I was invited. Unfortunately, Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti cannot attend due to the fires, but I had an opportunity to, to speak, or not speak, but to at least discuss the $465 million shortfall we have. But what appears to be happening now, if you have not seen an email, is about 11 San Gabriel, 11 legislators from the San Gabriel area, including Assemblyman Freddie Rodriguez, have sent a coalition letter to the Chair of the Assembly Budget Committee and also the Senate Budget Committee, requesting appropriations of $465 million from the state coffers. And as we know, the state coffers has a huge surplus of funds. And so I am doing the same thing, I wrote a letter to, I have wrote a letter, wrote a letter to both chairs, and along with, wrote a letter of thank you to the 11 legislators for that, for issuing that coalition letter. So in addition to that, as you know, Congressman No More Torres is trying to do a federal angle, a lot more complicated. So if we can get the state to come up with the $465 million through the surplus, that will solve a lot of problems and we can move forward. This coming Wednesday, the Montclair High School will have an in-person graduation, so we're great. And I do have the proclamation that we'll be presenting to the Montclair High School graduation class. They're doing two ceremonies, they're doing an afternoon ceremony at 3:30, which I will tan, and then they're doing an evening ceremony at 7:00 PM, which I believe both Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Martinez will tan, and I believe Councilmember Martinez will do the proclamation since there's social distancing issues going on. So that will take place Wednesday, and of course, Wednesday as well, we'll be recognizing the volunteers at 7:00 PM. I will be there, I'm not sure, I believe, I know Mayor Protim Rue said he wants to be there for that, and then Councilmember Lopez, I'm not sure if you're attending that or not, but that's Wednesday at 7:00 PM for that event. I do want to state that Memorial Day is coming up, so let's not forget our troops, especially those who died. I know that last Saturday, the Hindu temple here in Montclair had a prayer for India of the mass deaths that are taking place because of COVID-19, and Council, not Mayor Protim Rue, they participate on Zoom for that event. I, a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, I did, you know, it's kind of nice that things were opening up, I had a chance to tour the sewer treatment plants for Inland Empire Utility Authority. So that was a nice means to go out and just see those plants and see how they operate and see where our wastewater goes. I know that City Manager Ed Starr, he's doing good, and he's got, I believe, a doctor's appointment later this week, and we'll see how that goes, but I understand he's doing well. Next council meeting at 6:30 PM, there will be, and Ombitrans will have a brand new electrical vehicle bus parked here in front of City Hall at 6:30 PM, so I will encourage the council members to be here at 6:30 and get a chance to visit the bus and, along with staff and members of the public that want to see it. I think you'd be pretty amazed about what the buses, what the future of the bus is going to look like, since these are now mandates on, on the public buses. I have no further comments, so I will now go to the city council. And I think I'll start, and I was going to do, I'm trying to figure out how to do this, I'll start today on my left, so anybody on my left want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So first, I wanted to thank, but I think they had to run out of here, Pastor Rucker. I really enjoy seeing Pastor Ethel's enthusiasm on social media, and she is excellent at communicating, holding people accountable. You know, I told her a couple of weeks ago, hey, I have an idea about something. Oh, she followed up with me on that idea, and, and I think that's what we need, someone that's a voice in our community that is going to really hold people accountable so that we can get the types of services that we need to help the people in our community. So, thank you, pastors. I also want to thank Twan for coming on here and sharing your experiences. I know it's not easy to talk about the things that you've dealt with when they're so sensitive. So thank you for teaching us and helping us to become a better city, and also with that, thank you, Mayor Dupree, for acknowledging those comments and acknowledging that we as a city do care about the residents of our community. I also want to congratulate Montclair High School students. I, I think they were given probably the most unfortunate hand of, of all the high school years, because they had to spend their senior years, you know, not with their friends and not being social, probably missing prom. And I just congratulate them for putting in the hard work nonetheless and just getting things done. I sincerely hope that college is a better, happier experience, and, and I hope that each and every one of the students is able to somehow make up for the lack of company that they've had probably in the last year. But congratulations again for their hard work. And my family was able to visit the vaccination center at the Montclair Place, and they said it was fantastic, clean, there was about 30 employees that were there to help, and, and my family was the only, were the only people there in that entire facility. Everything was run very smoothly and went great. So thank you to everyone involved in coordinating that effort. And that's all I have, thank you.
Go ahead. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an interesting experience about a week ago. I turned down the, I was on my way home, and as I turned the corner, there were these big trucks with lots of flashing lights that were across the street from my house. And my first thought was, oh my God, something's happening, there must be a gas leak, the street's going to blow up. But when I got closer, I realized it was our public works department, and so I went over to ask, what's going on? And they said that they were going to, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but they were going to blow the pipes or sweep the pipes or some such thing like that. And I didn't really understand what they meant, but what they explained to me is that periodically, the whole city has to have their pipes, their sewer pipes cleaned, because if they didn't, then feces and other matter would start backing up into our homes. And so I was just standing there talking to them when they opened the grill, the grate from the man pipe, I mean, the manhole cover from the street, and there were about a gazillion cockroaches in there that were huge, they were like two inches long, and it was like a swarm. And I said, where are those going to go? And they said, well, if we don't clean this out, they'll go into your house. And so I have no idea what the vast, the vast scope of work that they do, but I have to tell you, just that alone made me respect their work that they do. They would do heavy work that we wouldn't even think about, it's not things that we usually see. I did several days after they were across the street from my house, I saw them someplace else, and I was like, I know what they're doing now, because they're cleaning out all of the pipes so that we, none of us have fecal matter, cockroaches and rats coming out of our toilet. So mega kudos to the public works department, I'm sure they do much more things than I can imagine, but I really appreciate them, and I think people need to really understand the work that they do. And then, thank you, Acting City Manager Richter and Mr. Fuentes, thank you so much for your work, your, your information about masks. And the last thing that I have is I wanted to announce that the Montclair Chamber of Commerce is having another e-waste event. It's this coming Saturday and Sunday, the 22nd and 23rd. It's a drive-through event, so all that clutter, because you've got a new TV for Christmas or whatever, you have all that clutter, just throw it in the trunk, drive up, someone will take it out of your car for you, you'll be on your way in less than five minutes. So please come and get rid of your clutter and come to the Montclair Chamber and, and drop off all of that stuff. The address is 8880 Benson Avenue, and it's on the corner of Benson and Arrow. That's all I have tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Who on the right wants to go first?
Want me to go, Bill? You want to go?
You can go.
All righty. All righty. Real quickly, my usual updates on the freeway construction and the closures for our residents and those either watching online or via phone. The, this is not close to Montclair, but it will no doubt affect traffic. If you intend on traveling east to the 15 on the 10 freeway, you will not be able to. Starting Friday, this Friday, the 21st, at 10:00 PM, all the way through Monday, the 24th, at 5:00 PM, the connector will be completely closed. So please avoid the 15 and the 10, maybe take, well, I was going to say maybe take the 60, but what's the point, you're trying to go north? But anyhow, avoid the 15 and the 10. That also, let's see, that said, beginning tonight, actually, no, I'm sorry, beginning this morning at 5:00 AM through Thursday, the 27th, at 5:00 AM, so intermittently, Mona Vista Avenue, eastbound and westbound, the on and off ramps will be closed at various times, or intermittently between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Let's see, they have this redundant here. Benson Avenue, under the I-10, will be closed nightly from 9:00 AM to 5:00 AM for crews to work on the bridge support structures. So it's just best to plan your routes accordingly, avoid Benson, avoid Mona Vista Avenue, and if you plan on getting off at Mona Vista, you might want to take Central Avenue, or even just take Indian Hill and loop around and come back into the city. But from 9:00 AM through 5, 9:00 PM through 5, Mona Vista Avenue, the on ramps and off ramps, on and off ramps will be closed. And for this week, starting today, we have ramps that will be closed as well, so basically just anticipate delays. Thanks to Jim Diaz on staff and Steve Stanton on staff for addressing the concerns of resident Gary Stavel and another Verna Reese, Verna Reese, from regarding the Sunset Park issue. I appreciate the information you provided and the fast and prompt attention given to those matters. Thank you so much. Before I left here today earlier, the email system was down, so I'm hoping the city clerk got one email from, actually, no, I emailed both Marshall and the city clerk regarding the letters of, getting the letters of opposition that we have for SB 9 and SB 10. If I can get those formal letters, it'd be appreciated. And I also sent out an email to staff in the planning department. I did want to see the amended ADU ordinance that was proposed to the real estate committee, if I could. Regarding the, the mask issue, I agree with Councilmember Johnson. I would like to see it also brought on the agenda, and if that be the next meeting, so be it, for purposes of discussion and clarity and anticipation. As far as I'm concerned, I don't want to see the mask mandate in place in perpetuity. That said as well, I left last meeting a little bit frustrated and disheartened, and I had two weeks to kind of chew on this. I, I still am going to hammer home the importance of bringing up the firework issue. Just this past weekend, I believe, Channel 2 did a special on the firework issue, and they highlighted San Bernardino County. They put on the screen the west end of San Bernardino County with their heat map and their problem areas, and Southern Montclair was on that list, that even the county deems as a problem area. I know that the county has a tracking system of some kind, a heat map, if you will, that does in real time track where fireworks are, where activity is happening, the frequency of them, the intensity of them. The fact that the county sees the area as a problem, I think it'd be incumbent upon us to have a in-depth, administratively, and if we are indeed tied by the hands of the state as to what we can find, I'd like to know why the county can be a little bit higher, because I would like to see us increase our fines as well, if indeed the problem gets out of hand. Now, that's separate from the presentation anticipated to be made by the police chief at a subsequent meeting, I believe, next month. I do think it'd be fruitful, because I guarantee you that after the 4th of July, we will see another influx of complaints from residents and just a smattering of issues and a dilemma that we'll face again, and we'll be back at having to address it and put them at ease and assuage them. So I, I'd like for us to be ahead of the game, and even if it goes after 4th of July, so be it, because no, this problem isn't just limited to 4th of July now, this is becoming a year-long problem, a monthly problem. Just a couple of days ago, once again, at 6 o'clock, 6:15 AM, up in my neck of the woods, we had fireworks going off, about six, seven in a row, and we're talking the big pyrotechnic kind. So the issue for me isn't going away, and I see folks having the conversation on Facebook, and I, I think it would be beneficial for us to do that. And I, I guess I won't let it go until at least I'm put at ease that, and I get some resolution regarding perhaps the limitations or whatnot, and I would even entertain if in fact that we are tied and we are limited in what we can set as fines, whether they be on a misdemeanor level or, or infraction level or administratively. I would prefer that we also even look at taking a, a position that we ask our two state officials in the Senate and the Assembly to stand up for cities and have the cities get a little bit more leeway and unhandcuff, if you will, unhandcuff us from the limitations that we face. So that's, that's my ranting about fireworks, folks, I intend to bring it up, but I, I would like there to be an item on the, the meeting in June for, in addition to the, or separate from the chief's presentation on the matter. Thank you.
Okay. I think the two issues you brought up, but first of all, the issue on the mask, I would suggest we put it on that, on the agenda on June 17, says by then, June 21, by then we'll have the, the state's updated order. And as far as the fireworks, I would ask the chief, I think the chief, we're going to give us a briefing, can you give us a briefing on the 7th? Just kind of tell us what you can tell us, and if you can, and you can tell us what the county is doing as well. I'd get, I'd get, you know, unfortunately, I have to stay up until 11 o'clock at night to see the Channel 2, but what the county is doing as well, kind of be briefing. I, I would suggest, here's the issue right now, I, I think if this council wants to dive into fireworks, make change the ordinance, we probably should wait until after the 4th of July, see how things transpire the next 60 days, and then bring it back and have a discussion on the council, maybe at, maybe at.
maybe our August meeting might be a good time to do that. That will get us right past the 4th of July. And we can come back and discuss the proposed changes. That'd be an appropriate time. But go ahead, chief, you were about to say something?
I'll reach out to the county fire chief, Dan Munsey, and find out what protocols they have in place for, for this year. Last year, as you know, Mayor, they had a program where people could take pictures, upload and report where things were occurring, and that was going directly to their fire marshals, and then their fire marshals were addressing those issues. I, I don't know if they're going to continue to do that this year. I would presume they probably are. But the information that we were able to get from them during that process was very delayed, sometimes three days later. So it didn't really work for us. I wouldn't sit there and say that we would discount it and not include it as one of our tools this year to try to address some of the issues, particularly where we're looking at places that are repeatedly lighting fireworks off. And if neighboring residents want to be able to report it in that fashion to try to remain somewhat anonymous, it provides us with an opportunity that we can actually reach out and go to the location and to the resident and speak to them directly and provide them with an informational letter that indicates the illegality of that type of behavior and what the potential fines are if they're captured continuing to light off those fireworks. We did implement that last year. That was kind of a plan that, that we were thinking about doing again this year was that letter and that contact to the residents. But it does take a bit of work. For instance, we only have so many people out there right now. I know you guys all know that, and so it can be difficult at times when we're dealing with that. The timeframe that Councilmember Lopez is referring to, that the fireworks going off, there's only three officers out there on the street at that time. So it can be difficult to address, but we will continue to do our best with it. I'll reach out to the county and see what they have in place. And I will ask them about their fine schedule, if there's anything difference that they have or anything different in relation to ours, and we'll see what we can do with that kind of stuff in the future as well.
Yeah, I appreciate, so you can do maybe on the presentations at the beginning of the meeting, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
No, you don't have to provide any written reports, just, just at the meeting.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to also mention that there were inserts that the police department had put in the sewer and trash bills that went to all the residents, that gave information to residents of who to call if they needed to for fireworks issues. And also, I know the chief will probably include this in his presentation to you, but they have designed some new decals that'll be going on the vehicles that will be throughout the city. So I just wanted to mention that, too.
Those actually did go on all the vehicles today.
Oh, good.
So there are new magnets that, that are out there.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll have a presentation at the next meeting, and then that allows us to further comment, I think, for Brown Act purposes. So, Mr. Ru?
Okay. Just to follow up, as long as we're talking about fireworks, it's an issue, but the way I look at it is you could put a lot of law enforcement, code enforcement on the streets, and if they're going to set them off, they're going to set them off, and it's still going to be hard to find them, simply because of the type and the way they do this. You could station somebody at the entrance of every street. If somebody's going to do it, they're going to do it. It's going to be hard to find who is doing it. It's just the nature of that. Should we look at it? Yes, I'm glad the chief is doing this. As far as CBS, I didn't see the report, and I'm not going to doubt what I haven't seen, but also the southern end of town is the county area, so I wonder if some of this isn't in the county area, and maybe the chief is right, working with county code enforcement and those who are dealing with that could be a way to start to head this off. So it's a good way to, to, to begin with this. As you heard, Wednesday, we'll be the Community Activities Commission Volunteer of the Year. We are honoring 15 volunteers who help in this community every day, doing great things. And I think it's important that we, at a time when so many people are doing so much that we continue to recognize them, because it is important. Tying into that, it, last week was National Nurse Appreciation Week, and this is National Healthcare Appreciation Month. So please take time to thank those in the healthcare field whom you know, whether it's with an email, whether it's a card, whether it's just walking up to them and saying thank you. During this pandemic, they have been frontline. If you hear the stories of doctors, nurses, anybody in the hospital, people dying right in front of them from the coronavirus, many of them working double and triple shifts while their own family were at home sick. So take time to thank them. Memorial Day is going to be virtual, as it was last year. It will be on the 31st. I think everybody up here has made some comments for Memorial Day, which will be broadcast. And we would like everybody in the city who can to join in and turn on to that Memorial Day, honor our veterans, honor those who died for this country. There is a new program, or it's not a new program, but they're trying to promote the 529 college program. This is where parents can begin to save for their children's college education. It's available through any financial institution. You can sign up for it. If you do so between the 24th of May and the 29th of May, the program itself administered through the state will give the family $50 to help them open that account. So please take advantage of that when you can. I did attend the Gold Line JPA meeting, as did Mayor Protem, or Mayor Dutre. The Gold Line has such support from so many of the people on that committee, and they all are saying they cannot wait to get it through to Montclair. There's an excitement in the air about it. If you drive Arrow Highway, you will see it in areas of Laverne and San Dimas where the construction is going on. But just how much is going on and what's happening, and it, it shows it's coming this way, we're going to have this. Then the last thing is, Mayor, the mayor mentioned about the Hindu temple. Yes, the Vidic Temple, temple here in Montclair did have a, an event on Saturday. They mentioned about prayers for the people in India who are dying at a tremendous rate from COVID, but they also mentioned for everybody across the globe. This is a global pandemic as we have not seen in our lifetimes. And they were offering prayers for everybody. They mentioned all the major religions, and they just want everybody to come together, think about your neighbor, think about those who have this. So tying into that, please receive your coronavirus vaccine. Your inoculation is important. It's the way to protect yourself. It's the way to protect your friends and your family. You can, you, in many cases, do not have to make an appointment. You can just show up and receive this. It's going to be important in the future to have this. We don't know where this pandemic will go. You may have the inoculation, you may need a booster shot. Just go out and do this. It's, it's practically painless. It doesn't hurt. And as far as masks, and then I will conclude, whatever the state decides personally, I intend to continue to wear a face mask or face covering for a while, especially in crowded places. There are lots of people who have not yet been inoculated. There are some who will not be. There are some who, for many health reasons, cannot be. And I just think it's the best thing to try to protect others. It takes me all of about one second to put on a face covering. It doesn't bother me, it doesn't hurt me, it's not doing anything. So for the foreseeable future, even if the, if everybody says tomorrow you can stop doing it, I will continue to do it. Thank you.
Okay, in your agenda, we have personnel committee meeting minutes for information item only, and this time we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.